RPC, Mid America RPC does all the purchasing and everything through that. So that's pretty well, that in a nutshell, not a lot of increase, but just kind of showing where we're at. LEPC, we still get some funds from the CEPF funds, but that's just about $4,000 a year or so, and that's about it.
I just want to try to understand the Camden thing, they're willing to give us $5,000 to update their equipment?
Keep their equipment operational.
And they keep the equipment?
Yeah.
Our kind of plan on that, some of the stuff they've got is pretty decent stuff that really complied with our stuff, logging meters and stuff like this. This is just something that we can cover some fuel costs if we up here with their equipment. Equipment upgrades that will not be covered under the Homeland Security grant. That'd give us a line item to be able to spend that out of.
Basically, they don't have to hire somebody and do all the work, they can pay us, come down there and do it.
Right.
Saves them money and it's actually very nice.
Our idea really is, and we've got their equipment approved, we'll upgrade, is move that equipment back down there. That would be more of a forward response, so if they have a big spill on the lake or the highway. The fire service trains all firefighters, what's called awareness and operations. Operations is basically damming and dicking and keeping that spill from going into the water. They know how to do that. They can get that started by the time we get down there. So that's a deal, keeping their equipment down there. So we've got some forward. You're looking an hour, hour and a half before we can get there.
So how much do you need on the expense line then for that, or do you have that in your other line item?
I don't, I don't really. I mean, that's something, I just kind of thought it in there just in case it does happen. We'd have a line item as far as revenue coming in, and maybe we'd have to put another expense line coming in, or just put it under the 53-203 hazmat response. That'd be probably simple.
Probably a sub-account called Camden County.
Yeah.
Underneath 53-213 hazmat response.
Or 203, yes.
203, I'm sorry. And then what we do is set that up as a sub-account, put $5,000 in, which is the same. Whatever they give us, we just put the same number in that account, and that way we have a specific line to bill against.
And if we don't spend anything out of it, it's just late.
Rolls into GR.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm good with that. I just wanted to let you know that's something in the works that's kind of been laying there too long.
Problems are bossed.
Camden to the knee.
What's that?
Yeah. Well, they have a new president commissioner, I guess, now too, so a new commissioner coming on.
So do we.
Understand. But, you know, in all reality, through the years, we found out, the local fire districts, four fire districts, paid into a large account. Each one of them paid $4,500 a year to keep the equipment up. There's like 170-some thousand sitting in a line item budget in their county, and then they're spending the money out of it. So that's sitting there, and that's what they're just going to draw out. So it's a pretty good chunk of change.
Cool. No further questions.
So.
Anything else?
That's kind of about it. The only other thing I want to let you know, we're starting to move the circuit court stuff tomorrow. We've got the three people going to be there. My question to all of you, have we been able to get rid of all those wooden shelving before? Now I have 12 more. Is there somebody from HBA or Habitat Humanity you all know of?
Debbie wants a couple of those upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, I knew about that. We'd put that for your records.
Take some pictures of it and email it to us, will you?
I mean, I know you guys got some contacts with them, I mean, those are some.
How many do you have upstairs?
How many do I have upstairs?
Oh.
None of those.
None of these big ones.
How much space is left up there?
We have some space. The way we put them up before.
She's much up there as we can, if you're going to fill.
Well, we had to do, Mark, we cut, we cut that upper shelf off because they're so friggin' high, and put two of them up there with yours, so.
Which makes it easier to access.
That would make you.
But we've got more room to.
What I'm saying is, is we better put as much up there as we can for storage.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we will fill it over time.
Sure.
And if we don't put all those racks up there, what'll happen is, two years from now, we'll be saying, "Well, we need to build some racks."
Where's this going?
Y'all just built upper stairs where the commissioner.
Which I have let Jill in there, and I have let the auditor's stuff in there too, so it's going to fill up.
It's all secured, so that's no question.
All right, let's talk about that some other time.
So anyway, we'll start doing that tomorrow. My own other thing, I've never got a really total commitment on, on the old EMS. Are we going to be able to move some more stuff back there?
I don't know.
We don't know, we're going to worry about that later.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to buzz through this. Because otherwise, we're going to be here until 4:00.
Okay.
They got those racks into?
Huh?
The racks are in?
Oh, no. No, I've got to move 800 file boxes out tomorrow.
So you've got to move them all, and then they're going to put the racks in?
Then they're supposed to be there Thursday, 25th?
It always takes.
About three days?
Always takes us long.
No, we usually fly right through this.
Has CNN contacted?
We do.
You have a visionary sister.
She called me yesterday and had two guys line up.
Okay.
She was going to call.
Because this is usually just. All right, Greg.
Okay, you ready?
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Go, Greg. Microphone.
This is all? Okay.
All right, again with his budget, you see the building maintenance, you see current list of employees, organization chart, income, expense, and then I would like you to use the building maintenance one. I think that's the one I actually have, because we kind of changed it around a little bit. The first one was your first one.
Okay.
All right, hit the high points.
High points, kept it pretty well flat, with the exception of the automotive, which I'm going to need some tires on the truck next year.
Okay.
Didn't really raise much. The only thing I'd like to see is the salaries, and maybe restructuring it to get me an assistant, so I can get some time away.
Okay. Separate, separate discussion from today, obviously.
Yeah.
We need to put that on a separate.
Granted, you know, it's part of the budget, so I just want to throw that out there.
You need to put together a package on it.
I think.
Work with Debbie, she can kind of explain.
Yeah, we've kind of.
We can load chart together, and we can. I don't have a problem at all looking at, looking at doing that. I think you should have an assistant to be in charge when you're not here, to cover other situations, so.
And pick up some of the load, so.
Only one that I see, Greg, here is just the equipment service contract, it looks like the annualized.
That's, that's an annual contract with Otis for the elevators. I think it's, I don't remember what the percentage was going up. It's a fixed line.
Well, no, I just, I'm looking at H, so 49 line, or column H.
Because we paid it, and, and we paid it, and we got, we're in month eight, or month seven of.
Sorry, that should have been changed to like the 15.
It was a one-time cost.
Well, I'm just looking at the.
We lay it in there to annualize it out.
Right.
So we missed that it was a one-time cost.
Okay. So it's not 31-47?
No, it should be 16-5, roughly, my rough figures.
Anything else for Greg on this? All right, you want to hit your capital highlights real quick, Greg?
You got that up here?
If you put that down below here, or no?
I had it on a tab. It was on a different.
Oh, you did have it on the tab?
Yeah, I had it painted steel in tab.
On which one are we looking at? Same one, building maintenance?
No.
Or budget?
Just not. Let's go back up to the budget one.
Yep, there it is, capital projects, got a whole sheet of it.
There you go. This is everything. That 80,000 probably can come down to 55,000, now that I've got some numbers back for carpet and patching for the building. I emailed you this morning with the breakdown.
And again, he put those by building, and then he put it by priority, A to D, so A being what he feels like this building.
Needs me.
Okay.
It's pretty well simple, I mean, HVAC controls in this building, I'm having.
So Carnegie, you're looking to spend $385,000.
That's a rough guess for the roofs.
Right.
If we have to go back to slate roof.
But that's a priority A.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if we move everybody out of that building, we save $385,000.
That's right.
Yeah.
There's part of your 4-4 right there.
I know.
I mean, we don't have to do it all right away, but the big thing is the roof.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, and that's the big cost, anyway.
That's the biggest one, that quarter of a mil.
Yeah, I don't know what a slate roof is going to cost us. I don't know if we can go back to a metal roof. I don't know if we can go to an architect's single that looks like slate, I don't know.
Some kind of something about the historical part.
That's why we didn't get rid of this.
Speaker has offered to help.
We got all, yeah, we got all kinds of people.
I've got to leave here in a couple minutes, but I need to talk to you before we, before I run out the door.
Okay, so you see the courthouse there, and then you see the health department, and upgrades.
Juvenile center. Yeah. Shepkers, the only thing really, a Shepkers that I see is the hanging heaters and the AC units out there.
So basically, are we going to try to have a meeting to discuss these things in more depth?
You know, after, so what we do is in, we'll get the budget back from Kristen, November 15, and then we'll start going in-depth on every one of these and actually setting it. And on the capital stuff, usually just block in a number, and we, we just play with that one.
Okay, they usually, I try to pull out what they've requested and try to fit it into the sales tax budget in some way, shape, or form.
Trust me, this doesn't fit.
And it's, you know, it's just going to keep going up. I mean, we've got buildings that need some attention. But we did some the year before, we didn't do anything really this year, except for, I mean, we did, EMS is getting a new facility, we've done some other small things, we're looking at the courthouse. Some of that with courthouse may be taken care of as far as concrete work and stuff. We still need to do the rubber seals around the windows at the courthouse to help final title, tightening it up. And then we've got paintwork inside that we need to get done from the, from the water damage.
And just keep in mind, yeah.
Bless you.
What I have to do by September 1 is get the budget for our departments and the budgets you control to the auditor. It may be a blanket fill-in number, and then we like, we've got to give Kristen some idea of what we're going, so we'll just put something in there, but.
When do we have to have this, Kristen, by September 1?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Greg, do you have any other concerns or anything?
No, I mean, I pretty well put it out there, it's.
So what about small tools and equipment and stuff like that?
It's just something I'd like to keep doing, replacing our hand tools and stuff. We're just wearing them out, just like cordless drills that we use all day long, screwdrivers, nut drivers.
Do you have something in your budget right now that's hardy for tools and stuff like that, or not?
Not really, but I've been cheating and using my supply account for supplies and cleaning and stuff like that.
I mean, $1,500 doesn't go very far if you're replacing a lot of stuff, so.
Or not replacing, we've been lucky the last two years, you guys have been generous and give, have bought some tools and stuff for us. So it's not like I'm asking for all brand-new stuff, just to replace stuff that's wearing out.
Okay.
And we could, in past years, especially if it's big equipment, we bought them out of sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
And we did, last year, have a little bit, 2,500 for tools. So if we want to now move that back over to his budget, was basically where it belongs, if we're not buying the equipment, it should be in his budget.
Okay.
So we'll just move, I mean, if you guys want, we'll just move the 1,500 back into courthouse account, and we'll just be done with it.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Guys?
Nope.
Run.
Ciao.
Send, send the next victims, I mean, people in.
Let me send the three amigos in for you.
Damn, we're about on time again.
I'm working at it.
Three amigos, yo.
This one I have feelings on post back.
Don't you got to go?
Yeah.
Eight minutes.
You must not have to go far, huh?
Can we discuss another?
Not going to be early, huh?
Can we discuss another day before you scoot out on us, that we need to set an agenda for? For this budget stuff?
Yeah.
Give me a date.
When?
So you tell me, that's the hard part.
Okay, uh, how about December 18?
No, it's got to be before September.
That's why I said when.
It's got to be before September 1st.
Can we add a few of these to each budget or something, where you don't hit them all in one day, or you guys want to hit them all in one day, or, I don't care.
What, what do you need?
I, I'm not bringing them back, we're just hearing their stories today.
Right.
What I need is some one-on-one time with you guys, tell me what you need, what you want to submit to the auditor. So, I guess I could.
We need to have capital improvements as a standalone, and we can talk about that one for four hours.
I know.
But, but there's no purpose in digging through that in great depth before we submit to the auditor, because we're going to dig through it again, then in great depth, when we get it back from the auditor.
Yes.
I mean, the problem with the budgetary process on the capital side, on the rest of it, but on the capital side, it just makes no sense to spend any work at this point on the capital side, coming up what we're going to do, because we're going to try to make decisions in, by September, that we're not really going to make until January, for capital things, we don't even know what they necessarily are between now and then.
Well, I agree with that.
Well, I think.
So, my preference is just to block out an amount under each one and send it over, blocked out, without specific items to it, because the budget, unless I'm mistaken, and tell me, doesn't have to say $45,000 for roof, it just needs to say courthouse, $45,000.
I just need some clarification on personnel, stuff like that, other departments are asking for, whether they're going to submit to the auditor exactly what they're requesting.
So when do you want to do it?
All of it together.
Capital improvement thing is, we can just put a marker in.
Yeah. Gentlemen, when do you want to do it?
You do meet again on the 27th.
We're doing 27th, I don't, that meeting's going to start getting long already, so we don't want to do that day.
Let's pick a different date, we don't have one set up.
What days are better or worse for you guys?
I could do Tuesday, the 26th, I think.
I can do that.
I can do up until.
You don't need much time, do you? 9:00 AM, an hour? Can you do that, Sam?
Actually, I can't do, I got a meeting at 10:00.
Okay.
I'm 26, so.
I can't, I got a meeting at 7:30.
I could do that afternoon.
Not that afternoon, I got a meeting at 2:00.
I can just say 7:00.
So much for the 26th.
About the Monday, the 25th.
Throw in the 28th, do it before we go to the United Way.
We could, yeah.
Don't forget to boost barbecue there.
What day we're talking about?
28th.
28th.
Uh, I could do 9, but I've got to be out of here by 10:00, because I got a 10:00 conference call.
Shouldn't take that long, 28th, or we could start at 8:30.
Shouldn't take that long, who are you fooling?
Start at 8:00.
Start at 8:00?
8:00 I can't do on a Thursday, I can do 8:15 on a, I have to hold a child, and they don't start school till later now.
Okay.
So 8:30 is probably the easiest.
Okay.
8:30 on the 28th?
You going to get on the agenda?
Yeah, and that's the only thing?
That's it. And if somebody else wants something, they need a unanimous vote, well, no, they only need two. But they have to bring in an open session to get the vote.
We're just going, yeah, we're just going to be talking about.
Yes, just firming up, I'm going to get it all ready, and then I'm going to ask you guys what we think.
I don't care if we have a meeting every day, just, that's.
All right, Larry, you're on deck.
Larry's got a range of different departments, what do you want to start with?
Let's start Roden Bridge.
Roden Bridge, you want to go with the big one?
It's all under Public Works.
There's all different departments underneath it.
And again, the listing of employees, the income and expense for the year, and we're going straight to the.
What are we going to, which document?
Excel.
Got it.
Okay, basically, everything is what you've seen in the past, there's a few things I'd like to bring out and point out to you. We did add under, in our revenue side, we added a line for the Eugene Water, as well as Parks, I didn't know if you wanted to include that in.
Hang on, I'm.
Right there.
Uh, I don't see that. Where am I at?
It's line 21.
Line 21.
Line 21.
It's in red, going across.
Reimbursement personnel.
Reimbursement personnel, sorry, okay, I see.
Right. I didn't know how you all wanted to handle, we just broke it out, and they're supporting, everything that we've got, they're supporting information along the bottom of their.
I would just default it to how Kristen and Debbie want to handle that.
Okay.
And that's just that, we know we're going to do it, so it's really just a question of how you want it.
Yeah, that's, we just wanted to bring it out for right now. So, the other thing, in the cash forward, 46-7-19, right now, our salt bid, and I'll get into that more later, we can't get, take any salt until after November 1. If we can get salt before the end of the year, we're going to buy 1,000 tons this year. If we don't, we're going to cash forward it and put it back into our salt budget, and like I said, I just wanted to point it out, I get down there, I get more too. Also, on that page, surplus property, we're going to be trying to get a new boom mower through the sales tax, that's showing the surplus of that boom mower, 12,000. Okay, next is on the salaries, this, we put in per the meeting that we had as far as reclassification, we also put in the 3% as far as raises in there, we didn't break it out, whether it was married or cost of living, we just stuck 3% in there. Going down through, in the expense side, there's nothing really, Larry, if you see anything, nothing really stands out, except when you get down to 53-298 water. Again, you're going to see a surplus in there from this year's expenses, we've included our sewer costs in there, but we've yet to be billed for the sewer. We added that in last year, I'm not sure what the deal is, Missouri Oak, we've told them, but we've never been billed for it, so. We asked that it be left at 7,000 in case we do start.
I guess.
Okay.
You're in charge. Congrats.
Yeah.
I may be back, I may not be. See y'all on the stage.
The other big item is down further, it's salt, 53-8-50, as you all are aware, our salt prices went from $66 a ton to $107 a ton. We're showing 80% of, that's 384,000 that we've got in there. Now, if we can't buy it, that'll go up by 1,000 tons, and we'll take it out of our cash forward and put it back in there. Right now, our carry forward doesn't show it, we show it being spent this year, but if we can't get it, we'll roll that over so we can still get our 4,500 tons, that's what we normally go through. Our contingency, we, with the increased costs and everything that we've experienced this year, we're proposing drop that back to 10.28%. I'm showing, paying out to the small towns, there, we've got discussion right now with Jill on about, on that, as far as some of the annexations that's been done in the small towns, whether or not they don't want to take over the roads, or at least that's what they're claiming they did, and specifically out in Atos, or there's some, we're showing as per their incorporated limits as shown right now. They may have to be adjusted if they don't want to take the roads in, because there'd probably be some illegal annexations if they don't take the roads in. Another larger item, in, down in the, I'm going to move one million back up just a bit. Where, where's our, back in 53-299, 5 and 6, you'll notice those, we've flipped those numbers, we've put more into parts and less into repairs, just because we're doing more in-house, as we discussed in the past. So it's basically the same amount of money, we just flipped the numbers, we put more into parts and less into repairs, they go onto the outside. And then on the last page, the one thing I, we'd like to bring out is two things, 54-901 software, that's a pretty healthy increase, but we're picking up software for diagnostics on the mechanic side, it was CAT, Ford, and international, as well as an update to the Solus machine, so that's why that's jumped quite a bit. We're also proposing to bring in software, bring in, bring all of our machines up to, I think it was Windows, was it 8? I think we're 7.
7.
We're bringing all of our software up, so that's showing there. We've got, I think that's it on the Roden Bridge side, Larry, is there anything else that you can think of?
That's the highlights.
And you can see down below, he kind of separated it out for you, it's really nice, like where he came up with the fuel, diesel and that, where he came up with, and that's the shortcut to get to the fuel stuff, right?
Right, that's the federal side, that's where they estimate the cost for fuel next year, that's where we've been basing ours on for the last several years. I also have the tax figures before and after, to show what we've paid to the small. If you go over to the next one, that's our computers and software one, it shows what we're looking at purchasing. We're going to be bringing up one of our servers, as well as some UPS stuff, our UPS there at the office. We've always paid for our own computers out of our budget, we've not used sales tax. And then down below, if you go down a little bit further, Debbie, is where it shows the software costs, there's Solus upgrade, $800, CAT software, 1,000 Ford in net, so, as well as the public work software, to bring everybody up to the same windows. Any questions on Roden Bridge?
Trying to absorb it all here, Larry.
I know. With having four different, five different budgets, I know I hit you with a lot of stuff. County planning, probably be the next go-to that. There's nothing really different on that than from year-to-year stuff, we adjusted some of the numbers up or down. I did include the 3% on the salaries there, but everything else is pretty standard, I'd left the rent, lease, payment, the same as what we had last year, so we adjusted some of them up and down as far as what our expenses.
And back all them out until we get done with the budget on the 3%.
Yeah. Well, again, what we do, we put the 3% in just so we can make our budget work out, if, what we've done in the past, if we don't get the raises, we just put it back in carry forward, or we work with them if we've got another place we want to put it, so.
Larry, where are we at with that payment compared of going back, that we've been, we updated the master plan?
We'll be closing that out this year, unless I hear different from the commission, the one with the Wyden Associates on the zoning, we still have to make a payment, but by the end of the year, that should be closed down. And for what?
I'd say we're going to close it out.
That's what Jeff's indicated, you know.
No sense in doing anything anymore, so.
Yeah, that'd be my recommendation, so.
I don't have any desire to spend any more money on it.
I don't think it has a chance. Debbie, if you can go to Parks now.
Yeah, I'm not going to put it on the ballot again.[1630.12]
Probably, maybe lifetime, but.
Well, yeah, Parks.
Yeah, Parks is the next one I'd like to get to with you. And again, Debbie, if you go down to the bottom, I've attached everything, it's separate spreadsheets there for you. This is utilities, the cost, that's personnel. If you go, Deb, go back to the personnel time. Up there at the top, that's the amount of time Greg put into two thousand thirteen, the five hundred and forty-three hours is what he's got. We extrapolated that out, but this year, we had a little more rain, a little more grass cutting out there. We use an average in his salary, and if you go down to the reimbursable, what I did there is I just went through and calculated social security loggers, health, dental, got that down to an hourly rate, and then multiplied it times that average. Now, one thing we want to point out, if you want to do any additional work at Parks, this is just maintenance costs. You know, if you want to do any work where we have, like we did with the pavilion and the parking lot, we'll need to increase that reimbursable, we didn't stick anything in there at this time. But if you want to do any, like.
I don't think we put any in for actual, you know, we did put the ten thousand.
Yeah, we put ten thousand. We just stuck in, you know, there's, I'm sure the Parks Committee is going to come up with a wish list, we have a meeting today at noon about that, but we put ten thousand there, that's what we had last year, so.
I don't want to get down in the weeds too much here, but I would be interested to know how much Greg is mowing out there, you know, because I think he's mowing a whole lot more than, and that Legion should be mowing more than they do, but anyway.
One thing that we did, we did get prices for contracting that out, it was a lot more than what we're spending. Than what we're proposing with Greg's time out there.
But you're just figuring it's time, you're not figuring any equipment or maintenance or anything on that equipment either, so.
Right. Now, we did, now, we did include maintenance and oil changes in this budget, if you look down our equipment, our, yeah, vehicle operation, we did include some stuff in there for oil changes and stuff like that on the equipment.
Right, but I mean, I'm talking wear and tear on the equipment and.
Right, right, we didn't.
And equipment costs, you know, and depreciating it out and everything else, and so.
But what the cost we got, you know, we're figuring at least this year, we still had the Ferris and the John Deere and stuff. You could buy some real nice equipment, and the cost that we got back on two or three different.
We got two different estimates, one was pretty substantial, the other one was probably a thousand dollars less per mowing.
But it's still, if you, if you multiplied it times on a weekly basis, from, you know, May to September, it was way beyond the cost that we're showing here.
Okay.
Now, the, I know the Ferris, the big zero turn, that was purchased out as, I think, sales tax equipment, that's been probably four or five years ago, if not longer.
Probably longer.
Yeah. The John Deere was also, that was.
That was bought out of.
Yeah, that was bought out of Public Works, the big John Deere, so. Any questions? I'll move on, I know you all have the other.
But that's something you just need to decide, whether you want to, you know, keep a person in that position or outsource it.
Well, so I'm sure Greg does a great job out there, but what's his official title?
His official title, assistant road superintendent, he takes care of asphalt roads and stuff like that.
Right. I mean, it's just, I think if somebody is an assistant road superintendent, they probably shouldn't be out there mowing grass.
Yeah, I would like to see another, you know, which, another individual and just have him oversee the parts and stuff like that.
Sure, and that'd be fine, yeah, oversee somebody that's out there cutting grass, yeah.
You know, if, if that's, you know, it's however you all want to do it, if we could get a person and put them in there and just let Greg oversee it, you know, there'd be minimal expense then on his side, but that person be assigned there year-round.
Because with the rentals and stuff like that, he does do a good job of keeping everything flowing, so.
Okay, Eugene Water, six seventy.
Good grief.
Oh, gee.
Yeah. When are we going to dump this? Shut her down.
Yeah, but we would.
I hope you have better luck than I have.
Turn off the spigot.
Again.
I'm not kidding.
Yeah. You're not going to hear no, I've got to deal with one of our favorite people this Friday again, probably, so, we've, we've drawn the line in the sand, if they don't have the money, we're cutting them off, charging reconnect fee, and this one lady, she's tried everything so far, including getting DNR down there, doing inspection on us, so, anytime you want to do it. If you look, go down to the bottom, again, or, I'm sorry, the spreadsheet, the revenue, this is what we've collected. About next year, this time, we probably need to sit down and look and see if our rates are high enough, or if they need to be adjusted. I think we're going to show that they need to be bumped up, but we projected out, what, we just started collecting off the meters in May?
By May, yeah.
Right. So, you can see where the, the fees about, well, it might have been as early as March, you can see where the fees jumped up, six, seven, nine, and it keeps going up. We're, we've had to invest in locks where they were going out and turning the water back on, we've invested in locks where we can actually lock it down. So, our suggestion is probably mid-part of next year, when we get into budget, we probably need to sit down and see if the rates are going to stay the same.
Where are they at?
I forget what we said, man, we looked at it pretty hard.
The basis.
So much a gallon.
So much a gallon, per thousand gallons. If you look at, this is the expenses, Brian's expenses have been up a little bit this year because of the water meters, he had to be there every time we changed our water meter, since he's a licensed operator. We've left his, if you go back to the budget side again, Dave, we've left that pretty high on the professional services. We've taken it down a little bit, but next year, what we want to do is try and locate a lot of valves and/or install new valves. Right now, we have a major water main breakdown there, we've got to shut the whole system down. We'd like to get some valves in there where we can just shut sections down. Again, he'll have to be involved, Brian will have to be involved in that, so. Utilities, that just shows our usage throughout the year, that's what we use to set our utility budget for, go to reimbursable. That's the time, reimbursed time, that we've had different people working, changing meters out, as well as some water main breaks and repairs we had to do. That's estimated out again, for their, go down postage, that's just our, our postage for mailing out, our billings every month. A lot of the reimbursable personal expenses is going in, where we have to, what we're doing now is we send out the bills, if they don't submit it, Cliff or one of the guys goes down and actually hangs hangers saying, we're going to turn your water off in such and such day unless the bill's paid in full, and then going back down there to shut the water off, lock it up, once they finally come in, pay it, going back down to unlock it, so there's, we're, we're trying to shift as much as we can to Brian, so we're getting our people out, but there's still time there.
Why do we have, we're arguing?
We've weeded those down pretty hard, there's probably about a half a dozen every month.
Yeah, this time, I think there's like five, four, five.
Every month, and it's the same ones every month?
Same one.
Yeah, it's same ones. And I had, the one lady came in and she was arguing, and I just finally told her, I said, ma'am, I said, either pay your bill, or we turn the water off, we're not arguing. I said, pay the bill, or we turn the water off. If we turn the water off, you're paying forty dollars, get it back up, plus your bill, that's overdue anyhow. We're, I don't know what we finally decided, she was, we actually charged finance charges on the delinquent payments too, she's short that this month, if she don't come in, we may be turning it over four dollars and sixty-eight cents, so.
I've been going out to you, I'm hearing this, I heard, I could hear this in St. Thomas, I went to Russellville, it's, it's, every community we've got.
DNR being so hard on the small water districts, so people are just, can't afford to.
Every community.
Well, and we've got some in our capital improvements this year, two things that we'd like to work on, like I said earlier, one is to replace some of the valves, find them from one and replace them or install new ones, and we would also like to get the tower painted, so. Other than that, that's basically what we've got on Eugene Water.
So, when I look at your reimbursement, reimburse personnel expenses, and so I see Teresa Wilson has two hundred hours.
She's the one that takes care of all the billing and stuff, it's, works out to about forty hours a month that she has to deal with, just getting the bills out, talking to the people when they're calling and complaining that, you know, I can't possibly use this much water, so.
So, that, that two hundred hours, is that just for five months then?
No, that, uh.
You said forty hours a month, two hundred hours, that'd be five months. So, we, we can, can we expect thirteen, five fifty-seven to double?
Well, what we're, what we're looking at, if you look down there at the bottom, we've extrapolated out, projected ours, you know, the eight thousand plus the five thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, we're looking at thirteen thousand five fifty-seven, that's our total reimbursed cost.
They took actual reimbursement, and then they projected.
Yeah. See, this is, this is the first year that we've actually been able to bill, I mean, where we were reading meters, we're having to go through, so we're, we're trying to build a basis where we, we've got a good feel for what our hours are going to be. Right now, it's just estimated.
Right. Well, I guess what I'm getting at is that, you know, looking at what you're putting in there for Cliff, I mean, it's twenty-six dollars or something an hour, and that may be close to what his rate is, but, you know, that doesn't, doesn't necessarily get us there, or get us back, and how many hours did it take to drive down there and get back? And then for Teresa, you know, at twelve twenty-five, that probably doesn't include her wage, our payroll deductions, and that's probably not total expenses for us, just because of, of a.
Eugene Water's losing proposition.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at, I mean, you know, with all her benefits and everything else, twelve twenty-five, there ain't no way that's covering her salary.
I talked a little bit to Sam, if we ever have any small towns disincorporate, I hope we draw a line in the sand and say, you've got ninety days to set up an association, otherwise.
We can, by statute, we have to take it over.
I know, but I think you don't have to keep it, though, I think you can give them.
What you do with this one then, you turn it over and say, you guys either form your own home association, or we're shutting it down.
Well, they done that thirteen years ago.
We didn't follow through with it.
Yeah.
Father, Russellville City Councilman, when I was out there, that's what he said, he said, yeah, let's just give it back to the county.
Well, here's the deal, we can raise the prices, and if they want to bitch about it, then they can form a home association, if they can do it cheaper than we can do it, then by all means, they can have it.
What scares me more than what he's saying, it's not so much the water, it's the sewer, that a lot of these smaller towns, Lowman's got it, Russville's got it, you know, it's, that's the scary part for me.
Are we required to take it?
I think.
If they disincorporate.
If they disincorporate, I think you have, you have to accept it, but I think it can be forced.
To liquidate.
To liquidate.
You don't have to hold on.
You don't have to hold on to it, but that's a problem that, well, back then Al Mueller wanted, that was his plaything to.
Well, we need to figure out how we get rid of this.
If you got any ideas, we're, we're game.
Well, let's quit making repairs, that's, that's the first step.
Well, it's our responsibility, Heather, until the time we say we're out.
We can't just shut their water off.
If we say by the end of this year, you don't have to do something, because we're not doing it anymore.
But you can't be, put a hardship on them, if you had water and you're just going to shut it off, you can't do that. They can go get a well dug, but that's going to be ten grand, if they want to form a home association, but who down there?
They could form their own water district and take it back over.
Yes, they could, yeah.
I, I really don't think they can.
You got to find five people willing to sign the document.
Well, we had it.
They don't have anybody down there that's going to be willing to do it, number one, or have the capabilities to do it, possibly, I can't.
We had, at one time, we had everybody, they, they couldn't come up with the attorney fees to be able to draw up the paperwork. I know Mark was adamant that we couldn't let Jill do it, but I think we, money, somehow we could figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, look, at this point, a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, it's going to be gone, if it's not already gone.
Well, no, we're still carrying.
We're living on it, yeah.
Yeah, we're still living on it, we're carrying.
And we're making payments back.
Yeah, we're making payments back, off our budget, you'll see in the carry forward, we've still got seventy thousand at what we started out with, you know, that's what, we're still carrying a lot of the funds, but all we need is wanting the wells to go out, or, or get a.
A pump to go in.
Put this on the agenda for a different discussion, because we're getting weeds on this too far today, too.
Okay.
I swear, every time we do this, we usually just flew through this part of it, today's tape.
That's fine, yeah, we need to discuss this, because we can't continue.
No arguments from us.
Yeah, for about four hours, then my D D starts.
Cliff and Teresa would probably buy you a beer or two.
Well, the only thing less is their sales tax.
Yeah, sales tax, and I'm letting Eric.
Get that on in September, if you would, Debbie, or sometime soon.
For sales tax, I'm on the revenue side, nothing out of the ordinary, except we are showing some money coming from the city to do some joint sewer work on the Woodward subdivision project, that's estimated right now at sixty-five thousand, and that could change depending on what the final design is. We also show.
Why are they going to do some stuff with us, is it their city sewer, I guess?
City sewer out in, yeah, out in the Woodward subdivision.
Grace Creek.
Similar to what we've done in the past, and then we also show the income coming in from the grant for the Safe Routes to Schools project, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On the expense side, contend, contingency, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't like to have that too high, because we do figure in a contingency into our project budgets, so, that just kind of sits there in case there's something that comes up throughout the year that we, that we need that wasn't budgeted for. Equipment, we're, we're going to get a boom mower, a five fifty with a dump bed, and then a single axle dump truck, and then we also show some of, that's a little bit over the amount of money we have available, and we're going to.
Are you just going to split and void like that?
Yeah, we're going to split, we'll just have two jacks, so. Yeah, there'd be some contribution from the two eleven budget for some of that equipment. In our cooperative projects, we have a reserve set aside for the next two years, we're kind of on the cooperative project, and it's a little towards the tail end of the sales tax the way those projects kind of run, so we have some money in there for that, to build a cash flow at next year and the year after. The main project to construct next year are the Keppel Region Projects, the Monroe Street Intersection, and then some work on Madison Street, and I guess even Monroe Street to make that a two-way, taking it from the current one-way, and then also starting design on the Stadium Boulevard and Jefferson Street Intersection and the rest of that side of the project. Bridge construction.
Our portion of Jefferson is only a hundred thousand?
I show half, or, the estimated design is two hundred thousand.
That's just design costs.
Design costs. Yeah, these, these, these two estimates for the cooperative are half. Under bridge construction, we're going to construct the Woodward subdivision stormwater improvements, also start design on replacement to the Liberty Road Bridge over Rising Creep, Creek.
Except the one in Taos.
It's actually right outside, depending on how.
Stirred.
Save that discussion for another day, like you said earlier, right? Also, we're going to start design on one of two subdivisions that desperately need it, there's two we're looking at right now, we'll pick one, possibly two, depending on if we can whittle that price down a little bit, but that's what we got currently for an estimate on one of them. Also, some miscellaneous stormwater construction, throughout the year, we, we try to do little spot projects, occasionally, we'll bid those A out, occasionally, we'll do them in-house, this covers some minor design work and some material costs if we build them, or if we bid them, bidding costs, and also twenty-five thousand dollars for bridge maintenance. Road construction, we're going to do the Swift Road or Boise Brewley Road upgrade, just the grading only, we won't pave that next year, just grading on that, and that'll take it from United Road in the Hickory Hill area down to Route H towards Henley, and then we're going, part of the Woodward subdivision stormwater projects, we're going to replace some curb in that subdivision as well, and in addition, we'll be redoing all the asphalt pavement, too, it'll be pretty much a complete subdivision upgrade, and under road construction for next year, we're going to have some money in there to pay for the curb replacement. Joint city-county projects, that's showing as a zero, the cooperative actually go to that fund when they become, when they actually do a contract on those, and so that'll transfer at the appropriate time. Major thoroughfares, I show a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount there for Business Fifty Construction contingency, I don't plan on using that, this number we'll adjust at the year-end when we know what, where we're going to stand budget-wise for that project. I'm kind of tracking about a hundred thousand over our contingency that we have this year, that gives me some cushion there, like I said, I don't, I don't plan on using all of that, and we'll adjust, I didn't mention earlier, but the cooperative project reserve is kind of my adjustment number there, that'll kind of go up and down depending on where the carry forward and everything hits at the year-end. Under villages, we have our typical a hundred and forty thousand dollars plus we'll carry forward any remaining balance at the year, at year-end, resurfacing, same, a hundred thousand, or one million dollars for that budget, plus remaining balance carry forward. Safety improvements, I don't show anything on that this year, that covers primarily guard rail, there's some minor intersection improvements, and we don't have anything planned for that next year. And then the BRO projects, that's a zero, that'll be done by. And then the B R O projects, that's a zero, that'll be done by year-end. There could be some contract carry forward depending on when the project actually ends, but that'll carry forward in the budget at year-end. And then Safe Routes to Schools, our estimate on that currently is six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so that, that'll bid next year, probably early in the year.
Was that, was that the original amount for the Safe Routes to School? I was thinking it was more around two fifty.
The grant amount is two fifty, that's all we get, it's a hundred percent grant, not matching or anything like that. When we did the, applying for the grant, our estimate was give or take about five hundred and twenty-five thousand to do the additional sidewalk and then some road reconstruction on Rainbow Drive in the area of the sidewalk. That was just pre, pre-design estimate, based on just some rough estimates on what we would have to do. A pre, or an actual more, actually this estimate is an after-design estimate of six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which a lot of that cost is gonna be in part of the road reconstruction.
So, is that what you had said earlier, or was, was gonna come out of that grant funding, all of that would be covered by grant funding?
No, we'll have to supplement.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where it's always been.
That was the B R O bridge that.
Yeah, the B R O is a hundred, well, it's eighty, twenty, but we're using our solid match for the twenty.
Okay, good enough.
So.
And there is another sheet there called eight oh three, that it's kinda broken down, especially that fifty fifty kinda thing.
Oh, that's the, that's kinda my working spreadsheet showing a little issue to work with when we set all these things up.
Again, like we've done on everything else, we try and include all information that we use to develop the budget that you've got it there to be able to look at it.
I'm gonna get down and weeds on something else, that I drove through Tanner Bridge the other day, that bridge is horrible. So, is that something, when you go back to them and tell them they did a shoddy job?
Well.
That's not been a year or two.
Those, without getting too much into the weeds, that kinda work is notorious for, anytime you, anytime you get into doing concrete work on a bridge like that, you're increasing the number of joints, and you're just, it's, some of them will pop up, some will begin new, we're gonna have to go.
What we need to look at is the next sales tax is actually redoing it like we did Wartsville Road and, what was it, Bald Hill? Or we take it all the way down to the structure.
We'll look at that.
How much money did we save doing it this way?
We, we'll probably gain another ten years, and that's what we estimated then.
But if we gain ten years, how much more, how many more times we're gonna be out there repairing that? Cause it is bad.
What we're gonna do, through the bridge maintenance program that we did this year, they looked at that and made some recommendations. We'll have to do the concrete deck repair, repair the bad spots, seal it really good, and then do a either chip seal or maybe a very thin lift asphalt overlay, just to buy us some time. We'll limp it along as long as we can.
So, we're gonna fix it and then overlay it, and that should help out a little bit, or is it?
It, it'll extend the life, the way we wanna approach this thing is let's get the most life out of it as we can, but still remain serviceable, meaning it's not.
Well, I was looking at, well, we redid it that way, it's like, okay, we can put this much into it, we get ten years, but shoot, if we gotta go out there and fix it some more and put an overlay on it.
We're not gonna.
There are a lot more actual costs in it.
We actually did full, I mean, full span replacement and things like that, when we did that the last time, I don't, it won't get to that extent. I mean, it'll be pretty much just a patch job and seal it off and try to keep it as.
It'd be like what, I don't know if you remember when we did Wartsville, we, we lumped that bridge along for a long time, too. It's gonna be expensive, you're probably talking length and everything, probably accessing a million dollars for a new deck on it to be able to get it done, and we're just trying, yeah, I know it's an aggravation, but until we can bite that bullet.
Actually, I don't go through there that much, I just, when I do go through there, and I thought how much money we spent on it, oh, son of a gun, it's terrible.
It rides, it rides rough, but is, it, it's actually in better condition than what it looks.
Well, I think that's the part that I feel I'm gonna cross, like, dude, Lord.
Jar your teeth?
So, well, we don't need to talk about it anymore, I just, I won't bring it up, I have not had any phone calls about it, which I'm surprised.
I am too, but it's some, it's the very same thing that we went through on, on Wartsville Road. And we're in very, it just, we're trying to get as much life out of it as we.
Oh, I understand, when we did that work to it, that's what I thought, too, and then I thought, a year later, and it's in that kinda shape, that's, so.
It's actually probably.
It's probably been five years almost.
Yeah, it's, it's getting closer, probably four or five years since we did that.
No, you're aging me then, don't do that.
So, I got, I got one thing that I want you to add to your equipment list, and, and I've talked to you about it before, but I want you to put an excavator on there, put a decent amount of number in there to, to find us a used one, so. An excavator. I mean, a hundred and thirty thousand for a tractor and boom mower, I know you use them a lot, but we're using that excavator a lot, and we're paying three thousand dollars a month in rent for whatever, so. Anyway, let's see if we can find a good used one for a hundred or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and something we can use. And I think we, I think that's a feasible number to find a good used piece of equipment, so.
And of course, they've talked to you about personnel, there's org chart, so we'll talk about theirs later, as far as that goes.
They gonna come back and talk to us about that?
Yeah, or closed session, or whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see you go ahead and bring those page adjustments back, and let's get it done.
Okay, okay, well, we've got, I know Chelsea worked on, we've got one at the bill chart, too.
Look through that to make sure it works.
We're working on new job descriptions.
We just had to get through the budget last week, that's the only reason, we're, we're shifts and gears now, we've got the budget, you all trying to get this, so.
Yeah, I missed that meeting, so.
Oh, yeah, nobody likes a budget, either, so.
Anyway, can you make sure that, can you make sure you get that excavator on that equipment list, so we can get that turned in as well?
As far as we can get it on, or do we need to take something out, we've only got so much money set aside.
Well, I mean, that, that would be up to you guys, I don't know, I mean, if, I don't know what you need, what you have, I mean, if you need all those.
Are you giving us the hundred and thirty thousand?
He's looking at.
You find it, is what he wants to say.
I think you need to number them on your priorities, but I see where Chris is saying is if we're dropping three thousand dollars a month, in, in three years, we can have it paid for a hundred thousand.
Well, I mean, they're not using it all year long, but at the same time, it's, you buy a good machine, it's gonna last you for ten years. I mean, you get ten years out of some of your other stuff that you're not using all the time, but.
Of course, we have to buy truck and trailer to haul.
No, they already got that.
We do have one that hauls.
Yeah, they hauled up one they got now, so.
Yeah, we, we haul, and we've got the equipment to haul or transport it, so.
Okay, I thought just when we were.
I'll get some numbers on what we can talk to the machine.
So, this is, this is kinda, this is maximum, this is maximum out your, what you've got to spend in equipment?
Yeah, that's, that, we pretty well max that out every year, we're, we're carrying a little bit over this year, including into that, but not much.
You got the single axle on there and sales tax that you could swap out.
That's what I'm saying, it's a blur, you know, it's hard, that's probably want that old Ford that we're getting rid of, we're getting rid of that single axle. That other one that Mike don't know, arrogant ass. And what we're proposing to do with that single axle is to keep the actual truck itself, we've got that stainless steel tank we bought from the fire department last year or two years ago, but it's on a piece of junk truck, we're gonna keep the actual truck and get rid of the dump bed off the other one, put that tanker on there, so we have something to not only haul water with, but we can also put calcium chloride, since it's stainless steel, we can use that. So, transport it up to center town area in the winter time, or down the road where the people pay for it.
Do you want the, or you're buying that used excavator outright, or can we do a lease to buy?
I think we could do either, I mean, it's, so.
Budget-wise, it'd probably be easier to do lease to buy. I can get it both ways.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we just need to quit talking about it and actually get it in, in there somewhere, and let's.
Like we've talked in the past, Chris, we, we look at that every year, but we try and.
It's not.
One year's cost, we can never buy used either.
Right. So. Okay.
We just gotta sit down, put it on paper, and look at it, but without having an extra cost and stuff, we can't do that.
Right, but just something close.
You're going a hundred thousand out there, and if we can find one for a hundred thousand, that's different, but if we can't.
Right.
We don't have the option.
Well, they could get an I D O.
Donnie, you're up.
Have a good day.
You got one minute.
And Donnie has a little stubborn, so you don't have much.
Donnie?
He's a little stubborn.
Hey.
Schulte, let's go.
You're going down by a thousand dollars per minute here. You should, hey, Donnie, let me tell you a secret, be the first before we get to like four hours later and we get cranky.
No, they say we're all.
Coffee's like kicking in and giving us acid reflux or something, what is this? We don't have this, I don't do papers, Donnie, I don't do papers, we're trying to cut down on papers.
Now, you're gonna want a printer, too.
I want that.
Well, it's.
Be nice, guys.
You want office supplies, too, look at that.
It's not changed much from last year, guys.
So, what's changed?
How you been, Donnie?
What's changed? Nothing real, I've, the professional services is sixty-nine, I talked to Debbie and to Kristen. We're getting a rebid now, so we really don't know what it's gonna be, but Kristen says she thought a six percent, so did Debbie, increase what it might cost for next year's for security guys downstairs. It's getting a rebid, only a couple of things I wanted to talk to you all about, it's, it's on, it's not, two things aren't on this budget. I wanted to get an idea from you all before I run it by doing anything with it. You see the days on the back for the days that we saved, the program of Richard, so it should be attached to that.
This one?
Oh, so now you're wanting some of that money now, huh?
No, not yet, just stay on.
Not yet.
There's a couple of things. I think we did pretty good in our oversee period the first year, I think we did, we've, we've had our growing pains like everybody else has had. We had one, two, or three take off running on us, and it took me three weeks to a month to find them, but it's like any other program you have, you're gonna have a few. Kansas said it, and so did Springfield, you're gonna have eight out of ten successfully completed, so we did pretty good. And right now, we have nobody out on the land at all, okay? Our biggest thing, y'all don't have us on yours, or is it on yours or not? The average state at the end, average per offender, it's a hundred and twenty-one days, we need to get that down to ninety. It makes it easier for us, that means then once they get out of jail, we try to get them through in ninety days. Because that would cut back on our time, but it's not gonna show on the bed date, but my thing is, recurrence of the crime usually happens after a hundred and twenty days. I had one guy, we got out, that was in jail for a class D felony assault, he got arrested the second week of August. He stayed in jail till December twenty-fourth, we put him, put him out on the twenty-fourth, he came in from the twenty-fourth of December, all the way to the fifteenth of May, every week, we did urine tests on him, we did stuff, always on, never had any problems. Then he dropped back off the wagon the next week, didn't show back up, so you gotta figure, he'd been out too long, you know, I mean, you gotta rush him through. I would like, just two things.
Been out too long, what do you?
Well, you can't, my thing is, when you're going through the court system, you have to have a certain amount of time to get them through the court system, you just can't leave them hanging out there, this isn't a probation.
So, they're sitting in, you're saying while they're, they're sitting in jail waiting for this all to get done, was a hundred and twenty-one days? Okay.
No, this one, when they once get out of jail, if we get them out, let's say you got arrested and you're charged with a felony, we get you out, and you're on, in a circuit level, we're trying to get you through the system in a hundred and twenty-one, a hundred and twenty days.
So, get you through your actual court.
Either goes to trial or they plead, is what we're trying to do, fast track. The longer you're out, the more chances you're gonna have somebody reoccurring, and that's what the problem is, a lot of times, you let these people out for six months, it's inevitable they're gonna use drugs again, and our thing is, if they do relapse, is we're there to catch them and get them back in before they do anything. Judge Beadham's been really good at that, if he sees where guys kinda, we get a call from drugging a guy, I'll get a call from middle of the night, say, look, I just went to this house, make a drug buy, this guy was in the house, I'll tell Beadham next morning, we'll yank this guy back in, put him back in jail for a wake-up call. He might spend three, four, or five days in there, and he, Judge Beadham calls him back over and says, look, if this is what you're doing, we don't wanna hear any more of this, and it kinda shakes him up. And it makes a big difference, you know, and kinda, and it works that way. The two things I wanted to talk to you about was, I would like to try to expand this program later on, sometime the first part of next year, I mean, latter part of this year. We've been housing it, now we can keep a track between a hundred and a hundred and ten is what we've keeping in jail, one time we were down to about ninety or ninety-five. I think we can expand it, there's other ways to do it, but I really don't wanna propose it until like, till Richard gets down and we sit down with Judge Beadham and really look at it hard, and how we'd expand it, what it would take to do that. Would you all be willing to listen to that later on and not have it in the budget?
I might could have you put it on the agenda sometime to give us a report actually at a meeting.
Yeah, you can do that.
I'll always be willing to listen to it, yes.
Yeah, me too, Donnie, but I, I want the sheriff to participate, and I want, I want the prosecuting attorney to participate, too, and we gotta get everybody involved.
Well, that's why I wanted to talk to sheriff on this other part, expanding the program would be a big part of him coming in with us, you know, and a lot of people don't wanna be responsible for. The other question is on this, I'd like to see, it's not in on my personnel part, I'd like to give Holly a pay increase of about two thousand dollars a year. I'll write it up and reorganize her job like I did before.
You put that on closed session.
Well, my thing is, because.
Cause you're on record right now, the mics are on, so.
I'm receiving all the phone calls at nights, and Richard's gonna be gone for thirty days, probably in November or December, he's gotta get a hip replacement. So, Holly, Holly's gonna be taking his job, plus what she's doing now, and she's gonna start going on week calls with me, I'm gonna be on call in one week, she'll be on call the next week.
So, it's a change in duties.
Yes, and the thing is, Dana, she's, she does the same job of all the guys, she's an excellent officer, she's got, what we hired her for, John and I first took her hire, or Beadham, I did, she's got probation and parole experience, seven years, so that helped us out, helped this program, because we were looking at it back then. And that was the main reason we wanted to hire her, too, not only to have a female, but also having her experience she's got.
Obviously, put that on a separate item and do it in closed session, huh?
Yeah, I mean, if she's doing more, she's doing more work, yeah, we can, we can take a look at that, Donnie, but let's, let's talk about it in closed session.
The other thing, on this year's budget, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get cut on this year, or this next year, for the pre-trial release program, for the supervising tools. We left it at fifteen thousand, we didn't use a lot this year, because we tried to get by without using them. But next year, what, what happened in this program, we first took it over, we told you, we were gonna get, the scale goes from zero to twenty-three. Do you know how this program works at all, or we'll have to get you with Richard and sit down. The higher of the scale you get, the more, the, the more chances of re-recommitting a crime and getting out of jail and not coming back, makes it worse for us. So, we tried, we first started the program, we came over, talked to these guys here, we were gonna pick up the zeros to fives, that means very low risk. Now, the bondsmen have figured out what we're doing, since we have a hundred and seven bondsmen in this town, they figured out what they were doing, and they're taking out bonding people, the zero to fives, at no, at payment plans, because they know they're gonna pay them, so to stay out. So, what we're taking now is the fives to thirteens, or sevens to thirteens, a little more risk. So, I see this next year, us using more, and if we do put another part-time person on, I'm really looking at the shackle, doing more shackling, because we're gonna have more liability on letting people out. The second part of it was, is I still have money in there now this year, I would like to buy another laptop computer like Holly's got, I mean, like, that Richard's got, so Holly can use that to go over and do interviews with, because I wanna have Richard, while he's almost thirty days, get the program written up, and I can give you all, so we can start the other program to add to this.
We got how many of the other bondsmen?
Hundred and seven.
So, Donnie, you're basically wanting to add a part-time employee.
A twenty-nine employee is service, service is good, I don't wanna pay the benefits.
And a part-time security person?
Sure, no, no, no part-time securities.
What's the, what's the part-time security that's twelve thousand dollars?
That's, that's the guys that come and work our, work with us, that's Albert working part-time, and that's Reggie working part-time, we need extra help when guys take vacation or people are out sick.
So, is that already in your budget from last year?
That's already in my budget.
Okay, so that's not extra?
No, nothing, nothing's really changed, I think I raised that two thousand, but I do wanna make you aware, we are gonna have two more Kappa murder trials coming up next year. So, that's gonna make a difference, I'm not putting it in my budget, because I don't know if it's going next year, Beadham's got, supposed to have a meeting at ten this morning. It was set for March of next year, he looks like he's gonna move it back, and it could be into the year after. But if it does, I'll have to come back in and talk to you all about jury script and that. But everything else has pretty well stayed the same. I would like to spend some money on some ammunition, while the ammunition's cheap now for our qualifications and stuff, because you can't tell when it goes back up, and buying it by the box is impossible, if y'all have a problem with it. I have money and a budget to do it, I just wanted to get it approved before I did it, so you knew what it was. Because it's late in the year, y'all don't like us changing things from categories without getting our approval.
Remind me, are we charging them for the pre-trial release thing for, if we're running? Remind me, are we charging them for the pre-trial release thing for, if we're running them on a shackle, drug test?
Some of, the drug tests are getting run through our drug court, which helps us out. That's run through batch program.
So who pays for that?
Uh, drug court.
Drug court pays for that, so that's not going out there. What about the shackle? Who pays for that?
We pay for some, and they pay for some.
They need to pay for it all. They wanna be out of jail, and they wanna be productive part of society, and be making some money, and paying their own bills and stuff, then they, they need to pay it.
The ones we, the ones we've kinda let out at this point were ones that had some kind of medical problems that we put on, most of them.
They wanna be out of jail.
I don't, we, how much have we spent?
I would make that a deal pretty much for all of them. Hey, you want out, you do have to wear a shackle, so we can find you at any time.
Problem is, if, if he's, if he can't afford to pay, I can't punish him, because he can't afford to pay, even though, even though he's lower in the scale.
If he can't afford to pay for a shackle, what's he gonna do out in the real world? He's gonna be stealing money to eat.
If he's, if he's not reoccurring, he stays on the shackle and not having any problems.
Does he have a job? I mean, don't they have to have a job to get out?
Richard helps with fine jobs, and that's what's been helping and I have, helping.
Well, but I mean, what's a shackle cost? So many dollars a day?
Yeah.
But it costs, costs.
Seventy, costs you seventy-one dollars a day to keep him in jail, and it costs us less than ten dollars a day to put him on shackle.
Forty or fifty dollars a day anyway. I mean, it might be seventy-one, I don't know. I mean, that, that's kind of a floating number. What, what's it cost to keep a person in jail?
They don't cost them seventy-one dollars.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what y'all used last time we were.
Right.
I can manipulate the numbers and make it look like twenty-two dollars.
But I mean, if it's costing five dollars a day to be on a shackle, or it's costing twenty dollars a day to be in jail, it's, it's cheaper for us to pay the five dollars. But I, I mean, I agree with you too. I mean, they should pay for, pay for the shackle.
But if it's, if we pay, we pay for the shackle now, it's between eight and ten bucks. If we did the shacking program ourselves, we could do GPS shacking for three dollars and twenty-seven cents a day.
Okay. Well, get, get Debbie all your, I mean, I didn't see the ammunition on my sheet, but.
I didn't put it on, cause that's on this year's budget.
But you need to get all that stuff to her, so we can submit all this stuff to the auditor, right?
Well, if he's paying this year, I don't need it.
Do you care if I buy a computer out of that to piggyback off what Richard had before for her to use, and then a laptop so she can, cause Richard's gonna be off thirty days right near the program.
Buy it out of what?
Out of what, out of the Richard's, uh, out of that supervision tools for that shackle program.
Out the pre-release program, this one.
I'll give you the whole sheet. This is the other one on the bottom.
If you've got money in your budget, you have to, you have to buy it.
Yeah. And see, on the very back sheet, there's got equipment. It's got the screens, as y'all gave us the new cameras, I mean, the camera system coming in. I was gonna get bigger screens. Instead of putting it in next year's budget, I could take that out and buy them out of that money this year, it'd be allowing to do it. Instead of asking for next year, cause he should have the cameras done with the sixty days.
The money's in the budget.
Yeah.
I'm gonna transfer the money out of there and put it into equipment, to capital equipment.
I'm good with that.
I'll get with you, I'll give you the bids, what it's gonna cost first, before we move the money over.
Just give it Dale and make sure that, hey, just give it Dale, make sure that we're buying stuff that he, he's.
More on?
Yes.
Okay. And on the door locks, Sonar Patrol was here yesterday. We're still having some problems with them. I don't, I told you, I tried to come up with a solution. I don't really have a solution. I did have Shannon get the back doors fixed. The front door's still having problems, but they had ordered parts for it. They have no upgrades to this program. It's, it's not gonna cost us like a, a rebid. And I'm at this point in loss for words with it, cause I, cause my thing is, I don't care how Stanley's treating us, cause I don't, I don't think that I'm getting treated fairly by them, and we're not getting what we want. But I don't wanna come back in and ask you all if the money's something that I don't have an answer for. What I'd like to do is go back and maybe actually ask a few people to come by here and give me an idea of what it would cost to, what it would cost to redo it all, then come back to you and say, this is one of the options, and maybe we could find something else that might be less per, per.
Thought we had somebody in the building already looking at it.
Well, he is, and that's what I'm saying. I was kinda getting an idea. Also had Tyler Key come up and look at it. They do stuff like this too. They're local. You know, Stanley, when I got to them about, when I took this over, there was twenty-one employees down there. Stanley's only got one employee now. And Shannon does do a good service for us, but he's the only one.
Well, we pay a service, our contract fee or equipment service fee.
For nothing. I'll tell you what, I'm done with, pretty much done with Stanley, so as soon as we can get out from underneath of them, I'd like to look at it.
Want me to start checking into other options?
Because like you said, they used to have people here.
Wayne at Central Security, I think he's right across the street. They're monitored out of, we're all on.
Our biggest deal was if we'd have to replace the equipment. I don't know if we necessarily have to.
I know several, several of the judges have left Stanley and went to other, other options.
Look at it.
Scott said if the equipment's ours, he thought he could work with it.
Okay.
So that pretty much answered my question there.
Why don't you investigate it?
It's on our door, it's ours.
Any other questions? I'll try to, I'll try to get Holly's stuff over to y'all about her pay thing within the next two weeks.
Get on the, to and give us an, an update on the.
Okay, I'll have Richard come over with me. On that program, that's done, Richard has to do that manually, but Judge Beadham has gotten onto Aska. They're drawing a program up specifically for this, so, and he's been on it pretty hard. We met with them last Wednesday, and they're just about finished with it. Hopefully, we'll start to get add stuff to it pretty soon. So this way, when you ask for it, I can just give it to you automatically. But Richard takes about three days to get this done, cause he has to pull them all by hand. That's it. And you all need anyone else?
Thanks, Donnie. Sorry, I missed the beginning of your presentation.
Well, I wanna thank you. It's been good working with you in here.
Been my pleasure to work with you. I always appreciate the fact, you bring stuff to us way in advance. And they're not, not everybody does that, and it's, there's nothing more frustrating than people showing up at the last minute and saying, oh, I gotta have this signed today. When'd you find out? Oh, like a month ago?
If you ever own your own business, you know, the thing is, y'all are running a business, that's what it is here. Maybe just gotta get our best buy out of our dollars. But if I did expand this program, like I said, I only wanna stay the twenty-nine employee. I don't want another full-time like that. But I have to get with the sheriff yet, and with Judge Beadham, and to get with the prosecutor. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Donnie.
All right, do you guys wanna take a break before we go into mine?
No, we gotta get this done.
Okay.
You shouldn't be but five minutes, right?
Okay.
Well, no, wait a second. I thought we just said another time to talk about yours.
That was, yeah, we can.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I thought we had just said we were gonna take yours up on a separate day, all as a standalone.
No, twenty-seven.
Or do you, or are you gonna take such a short period of time, we can do it now?
Oh, no. I mean, it's up to you guys.
Oh, no.
No, it's up to you guys.
Sam?
What?
Yeah, I got somebody waiting.
I, I think we probably oughta come back and do hers. What do you think, Chris? Yeah, all right.
Twenty-eighth at eight-thirty.
Yeah, you're gonna get it set out to us, right?
Yeah.
Kinda way we can get down the weeds.
And they're all right there, if you wanna look at them.
And trust me, hers budget's always weedy.
And what's, what are you talking about, Debbie?
Well, we gotta finish up all the other departments. Basically, is what I thought we were gonna talk about, is, you know, where you want me to set their salary. There's a couple line items, I mean, this department I wanna change. These that you see up there are basically all under your control that nobody's talked about.
Domestic shelter, EMSs tags, general accounts.
And some of them are in and out, so it's not that big a deal, you know, so the health insurance.
Most of those are two-minute discussions.
Health insurance, self-funding is gonna be, we don't know on that, do we?
Basically, it's just a budget.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
How do I find all those? Are we done talking about it already?
No, it's under, it's under commissions, under, department's under the commission.
How are we running based on our projections?
Correct, okay.
Basically, pretty good right now. I just don't wanna jinx it. Um, once people meet their deductibles and out of pocket, then they'll start using it more. I've got a feeling, so.
I still say we need to have a serious Biggest Loser contest for the county, cause it would promote a healthier lifestyle, you know, help people did it and.
I'll bring the donuts.
I am dead serious. I don't know what we can have as a prize, if we can offer a, a day off or a vacation leave, because it's gonna promote a healthier living.
Nobody's gonna do that work for a day off.
Huh?
Nobody's gonna do it.
I would.
Not for a day off, you would not even.
I would too.
Well, you don't get paid for a day off anyway.
Yeah, don't tell me that now. I would run like twice a week.
Stick it up on the twenty-eighth, eight-thirty.
So.
Can I bring up something real fast?
Only if it's about the Biggest Loser thing.
EMS and their overtime. Um, you guys need to think about their accrued liability. It's going up and up. We're gonna eventually plateau, because everyone out there is gonna accrue the two-hundred-and-forty hours, and that's why.
Why do we allow that much of an accrual?
Right now, they're earning the same as every other employee, which really, I don't know if that's the way it should be, because of their scheduling, you know? Every other employee has to take off.
Yeah, I didn't think about that. They can, yeah, I didn't think about that.
They don't.
And I had neither.
Oh, so you know, they could work like, they could work like a Sunday, Monday, and then work a Friday, Saturday, two weeks later. And take an entire, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten-day vacation without taking a day of vacation.
So the auditors have brought it up the last two years, that, you know, their cost and liability to us is going up.
Why do we have, why do we have a two-forty cap? You know, I don't know any business that allows any more vacation than.
The state of Missouri and the city.
Allow unlimited capping.
Not unlimited, but they're higher than ours. The state of Missouri is two-forty plus however many years you've been there. You get more. You get to save more time. The city's the same. So we're competing in the market with the state.
I wouldn't let people carry more than two weeks.
I agree. Eighty hours.
I mean, in most departments, it's, it's not.
Don't look at me like that, Larry.
Come on in here, Larry.
If you, if you want a vacation, use it.
I think that most people do not.
It's not, it's not a way to get an extra payout when you retire.
Benefit that everybody was hired in.
Yeah.
Well, but you know, everybody's hired in.
They accumulate vacation for indefinite amounts, for two-forty.
Two-forty.
Two-forty hours.
And there's a lot of people that do not ever get there. I mean, but any of us, the problem is, is that they have such varying schedules, that they don't have to take off a day to go to the.
So there's a solution to this. Hang on, there's a solution to some of this, okay? Some of the solution is, Mike needs to work on his scheduling.
Yes.
You know, nobody can be off for more than four days at any time out there.
They let them trade with people.
You can't do that. He's gotta stop that.
They, they, that's part of, I mean, if you're scheduled to work Tuesday and Friday, twenty-four hour shift.
Let's have a discussion.
Let's have, I'd like to have Mike in here separately to talk about this. So will you invite, cordially invite Mike to come up one day, and we will have a cordial discussion about no more shift swapping. People can unlock, cannot take two days. I mean, look at this, that's, that's forty-eight hours in two weeks.
Sure.
And ten days off.
I mean, there's a lot of departments that don't have that ability, and theirs is accruing at a faster rate, because they do. They have such a varying schedule that they don't have to use their time off. They schedule their doctor's appointments on days when they're not working, or they schedule their vacation days on days they're already off, so.
If they're lying.
Well, the doctor appointment thing, there's no way to address that issue, and I don't wanna address that issue, but the vaca, the, the long-term vacation gaps are a real issue.
But any, I think that there needs to be some kind of maybe varying schedule of rules for people that works.
You could have another full-time job.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's the beauty of, that's why the fire department does that. They can take vacations, and they don't have to take vacation.
They all work other jobs.
Well, sometimes, but if, if this was your full-time job, and you, and you worked full-time somewhere else, and you just took off there, so you could take two days off.
If you work a weekend day, you cannot work, you cannot work two weekend days per week, and a weekend day is Friday through Monday. So you can work one, you can work Friday, but then you gotta work Tuesday. You can't work.
I think some of it, it needs to be, these are your scheduled days, if you're not working.
It's a vacation day. I agree. I agree, no swapping shifts.
I mean, I think that that's some of, I mean, if I know I wanna be on Wednesday.
It's gonna be a hard one to figure out, I think.
I think Mike needs to be up here, okay? I think you need to be up here. I think we just need to sit around and have a discussion on it.
I just, that just put me even more against the twenty-four hour shifts. I kind of.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that.
Gotten okay with it.
And I, I do. I think there needs to be some kind of legal schedule that's based on their, their scheduled hours versus someone that works eight hours a day, five days a week. I, I think their accrual needs to be maybe adjusted down to where they're not earning.
All right, let's, let's, let's have a sit-down, talk about it.
Yeah, yeah. It's not an easy.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, it's not an easy thing to figure out.
But just keep that in mind.
But no shift swapping would be an easy one.
Yeah, and I think that would help in the scheduling process, in the overtime process.
Well, and in the new system, we can put in their scheduled hours versus their work hours, if they're not on a scheduled day.
You're gonna be sick this week, that way I can get your overtime shift. I'll be sick next week, you get my overtime shift, and I guarantee there's some of that going on.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Sam, you got anything else?
He's like on overload.
You know, I gotta tell you the story. The day after I won the election in two thousand and six, I got a phone call from a very close friend of mine. We always talked about running elections like a dog chasing a bus. He called me up the next morning, he said, you caught the bus, now what? And I had that exact same look on my eyes. I never even thought of it till I was there, I was like, oh, boy.
No, I'm, 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 I got so much up here, see, and I'm, most of this I don't know, so. I'm fortunate that I really can sit in on these, so that at least when I come in in January, I'm not gonna be completely stupid. And these two guys are gonna help me a lot.
You have such more of an advantage.
We can dumb you down.
I know.
Than any one of us had, because you're getting four months of, and in four months, you see ninety-five percent of everything you're gonna see during a regular year. So you got a huge advantage. I didn't get that.
No, this is, this is.
He didn't get that.
This is mind-boggling.
You got a little bit of it, but not much.
Move to stand and recess.
Second, all those fair say hi, those motion carries. Oh, jeez.
How am I get your back fixed up?
Give me some.
Debbie, you really need to toughen up. You're tired of nipping around, nipping and stuff, trying to play the symphony card around this.
Yeah, I don't give a symphony. Here I am.
So what'd they say? Are they giving you medicine? I didn't get to hear the story. Good sitting around too much. Hey, go get you one of them.
Taking out your kidneys, I just made that coffee.
I'll get you that medicine ball or whatever, so that you're sitting there and just bedded on your ass.
Cracking my back?
We've got parks in here. Do we need to shut that off? Parks and city meeting here?
Oh, yes. Let's get Betty over here. She needs to.
He asked me something about it. Yeah, we did it that last year. I told him, but he missed it.
What do you want to miss?
Was it a buck? She's talked to me.
Keep it pushing, no, no, keep the on thing pushing until it goes off.
I like you too. We got a paper, a ham too. He didn't, he bought a salmon as a great champion one. Did he sell it for sticker? No, he got a silver.
I wanna, I know I bought a ham. I haven't even, I haven't got a thank you ad or anything, something.
You know, the irony is, is sometimes you get a new. Yeah, we got one for that. We bought jointly, I didn't.
I gave mine to Samaritan Center.
I paid that much for a ham, I mean, that's why I buy it out of my. We'll get a slice. Yeah.